Welcome to the first hearing of the committee's inquiry into identity protections for proceedings involving children. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Robert Borsak and I am the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Welcome, Mr. Highland. Could you please state your name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Craig Malcolm Highland, Solicitor for Public Prosecutions. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Yes, Chair, I would like to.
Can I just pull that microphone in front of him? That's voice activated, so talks right into it.
Thank you. I had no intention of giving an opening statement till I read something that was posted on the parliamentary website last night. As a result of that, I'm going to give a short statement. As I've said, I'm the Solicitor for Public Prosecutions. On the 28th of August this year, I attended and gave evidence at the August Budget Estimates. I answered those questions under oath and did so truthfully. I became aware at 6:30 AM this morning that Her Honour Judge P Wass's submission to this committee dated the 28th of November was only published in redacted form last night. In her submission, she seeks to challenge my responses to questions posed at Budget Estimates. The late publication of that statement on the parliamentary website is a denial of procedural fairness and has provided me no time to respond to Judge Wass's extraordinary and untrue allegations. My responses were correct and were answered on my own knowledge and not as inferred by Judge Wass. The issue related to an employee of the O D P P who provided a screenshot from the O D P P case management system to 2 G B. The employee works in the office's media team within the Director's Chambers. The remit of my role extends to the office's 850 solicitors and legal staff. To the best of my knowledge, none of those staff were involved in this matter. As advised to Budget Estimates, the responsibilities of my role do not extend to making a determination in relation to staff who are not within my area of control. Also, as advised to Budget Estimates, I was not a party to the decisions that were made in response to any investigation and I was not advised as to the outcome of the investigation. I understand, as subsequently advised in responses to supplementary questions, that the employee was counselled in relation to this matter. The name of the child was not disclosed by 2 G B and nor, to my knowledge, was any information which identified or was likely to lead to identification of the child. This goes to the heart of Judge Wass's allegations as the child's name that was a subject of the criminal proceedings for what I will say are very serious crimes was not publicly disclosed by 2 G B and...
No, sorry, keep going.
And Section 15 A of the Children's Criminal Proceedings Act was not reached. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Highland. Thank you for coming today. I need to move my microphone as well. The position occupied by Ms. Calorin, at what level is she employed and what's her position description?
She is an administrative officer, Level Seven. She is the media officer and she is attached to the Director's Chambers.
And in answers to supplementary questions, you indicated or the O D P P indicated that the staff member interviewed by the police in relation to the disclosure was a prosecution officer, Administrative Level Five. Was Ms. Calorin Level Five at the time of being interviewed by the police or was that a different person who was interviewed?
That was a different person.
That was a different person who was interviewed by the police. So one person was interviewed by the police and then a different person was interviewed by the external law firm who did the inquiry?
I do not know whether they interviewed the Level Seven Officer as part of the external inquiry.
But you do know that it was that Ms. Calorin was not interviewed by the police?
Yes.
Okay. Why was that?
I do not know.
So we have an affidavit, we have, sorry, a submission which indicates that there were conversations with the police and that the police indicated that at a certain point the O D P P stopped cooperating with the police in their inquiries. So was the fact that only a Level Five Officer was interviewed by the police, does that indicate that O D P P officers ceased their cooperation with the police in this matter?
My responses in Budget Estimates, and I maintain those, was the O D P P cooperated in the process. Contrary to Judge Wass's assertion, there was no direction, for want of a better word, to staff to comply or not to comply.
I'm not asking you about directions. I'm asking you, it seems unusual, doesn't it, that the police would interview only one person and that is a different person to the person who appears to have been interviewed by the external law firm that your office engaged to do the inquiry?
I cannot comment on police methodology.
So you're suggesting that if the police had wanted to interview any person in the O D P P, that they would have cooperated with that inquiry?
I can't make that assumption, but, you know, I would like to think so.
Who would be able to assist us with that answer, Mr. Highland?
Well, you would have to ask the police officer who they asked to be interviewed and who declined to be interviewed. I do not know the answer to that.
Can I just take you to answers that were provided to questions on notice? And in relation to a question where you were asked to provide details of any member of the staff of the O D P P found to have released information, the level of their employment, thank you for having provided that information, and then I'm looking at question on notice 65, and anybody they had conversations with who may have been seen to have encouraged or authorised the release of that information. That part of the question was unanswered. I invite you to answer it now.
I can only assume it is also, as you've already mentioned in your earlier questionings, the administrative officer, Level Five.
So is your answer that the only other person with whom the Level Seven Person spoke was the administrative officer, Level Five?
I do not know who the Level Seven spoke with and I maintain that position.
I'm asking for an answer to a question on notice which was only half answered. I'm asking you to provide that answer now. And if you can't help us, Mr. Highland, who would be able to help us?
Well, it would be someone who's read the report.
And who would that be, Mr. Highland?
It would be someone within the Director's Chambers.
And so what name would you suggest which we make these inquiries?
Justice Helen Wilson.
Thank you very much. And so you can't add anything else?
No.
And so it's your evidence. So, help me, is Level Five senior to Level Seven or Level Seven senior to Level Five?
Seven is senior to Five.
So you are, it's your submission that a senior media officer had conversations with a junior media officer and either singly or together they decided to release information about a matter in Tari District Court to the media?
That is not my submission at all.
Well, then what is your submission?
I have no submission.
Mr. Highland, thank you for being here and thank you for your evidence. When you, in your opening, you said that, or words to the effect, that Judge Wass has provided a submission that is untrue.
That's correct.
Could you please explain and extrapolate what you mean by that?
I refer to page 10, where, sorry, page four and where she's dealing specifically with me, pages 14 and 15, where she is suggesting that I gave untrue evidence to Budget Estimates and the inference from the comment on page four is that that should result in perhaps the removal of me from my position. Which is an extraordinary set of circumstances and deplorable that I only received it this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. You would appreciate I haven't had time to fully absorb the entire submission. It's had the quickest of skims.
And so in terms of, sorry, just to, just at paragraph 555 of the judge's submission, she refers to that answer. He said, however, that one would expect hypothetically the employee was counselled. It's now your evidence that the employee was counselled. Is that correct?
The response to supplementary or questions on notice was that the employee was counselled. When I gave evidence at Budget Estimates, I did not know the outcome.
Thank you. And is it now your evidence that the employee was counselled or were they cautioned?
My understanding is counselled.
Thank you. And is that still your understanding? Has that employee been, was that employee cautioned to your knowledge or not cautioned to your knowledge?
As I said in my opening statement, I am not responsible for this area of the office. From my knowledge,
Yes.
without having seen any documentation, counselled.
Thank you. And Mr. Highland, are you able to provide the committee any assistance in terms of any further conversations that you have had amongst other offices of the O D P P at any levels that might assist this committee in trying to understand what we are, which is essentially how or what mobilised or motivated the person who did provide the material to 2 G B? Is there any conversations at all that you have had that you would like to share with us that could assist us?
My conversations internally mostly relate to my anger at being drawn into something that I know nothing about.
Which is...
That's my answer.
Thank you, and that's understandable. So in terms of those conversations you've had in expressing your anger, are you able to share anything with this committee that would help us understand? Because clearly there are internal matters within the office. Clearly some people know some things and some people don't know other things. In terms of those conversations you've had where you have expressed your anger, have you learnt anything in response to those expressions that might assist us as a committee?
Nothing in addition to responses at Budget Estimates, questions on notice or supplementary questions on notice. That is the extent of my knowledge.
And so in that, with that understanding, are you suggesting that there are, that the people within the office that you've spoken to know nothing more than what you've already, the evidence that you've provided? Or that other people that you've spoken to have just not disclosed information? What is your understanding?
I'm unable to comment on what individual's understandings or knowledge of any given circumstance is. I'm afraid that's something I can't assist with.
And so your clear evidence is nobody has provided you in those conversations where you've expressed anger any further information that would, any other further information than what you've provided?
Nothing in addition to my evidence or the material provided in supplementary questions or questions on notice.
Thank you.
I just have a couple more questions in relation to the information that you provided in relation to supplementary questions. And I just want to confirm, and for your assistance, I'm looking at answers to supplementary questions 195 to 202. And the issue was in relation to what may have been provided to the radio station but not actually published by them.
Yep.
And the, it appears that answered a question 196, the answer given is 2 G B was provided information that identified the young person. No information capable of identifying the young person was published. So am I correct in understanding that they had the information but they chose not to publish it? Especially when I look together at the answer to question 198, was any material provided on the basis that it not be published? And the answer being it is a matter for media outlets to determine what they publish. So the material provided actually disclosed the name, but it was the responsible decision of the media outlet not to disclose that name?
I'm sorry, I was not following that. I was trying to find the reference.
Sorry.
Could you give me the reference again?
Answers to 196 and 198.
So the answer was 2 G B was provided information that identified the young person. No information capable of identifying the young person was published and what was your other question?
198.
198. Was any material provided on the basis that it not be published? Yes, okay. And your question is?
So I just want to confirm that the material that was released from the O D P P contained the name of the young person. There was no undertaking not to publish that name, but it was the media outlet's own decision not to release that name.
I can answer that in part. I can't answer anything about an undertaking because as I've said, I had no involvement in this.
It's the answer to question 198, I think, goes to that.
Was any material provided on the basis not be published? It is a matter for media outlets to determine what they publish. That doesn't say there was an undertaking. It doesn't say an undertaking was asked for.
Then basis was on the basis. So was it provided?
I cannot assist you, Mrs. Carter.
Thank you, thank you. Are you able to assist me with more information in relation to supplementary question 207, which discusses members of O D P P staff accessing information about court cases and it's only to be done consistently with the staff members' duties? Is it typical of a media staff member's duty to access information about a range of matters directly from the O D P P website?
It's not the O D P website. We have a matter management system called Matters.
Thank you.
Permissions are based on your, permissions for access are based on your level of employment within the organisation. There are also three categories of information in there. There's restricted, there's executive, which is the director and myself, and there's unrestricted. I would expect the media officer, in order to do their job, would have access to restricted and unrestricted but not to executive matters.
And could you take on notice whether information in relation to proceedings involving a minor would be restricted or unrestricted?
I would suggest there are other factors to consider in the restriction level. If the matter is a special interest matter, we have categories of special interest matters. We have other matters such as Alan Jones, which is highly restricted. And reasons for special interest are media interest, political interest, particular sensitivities about it. There is a scope there based on the facts of a particular matter to make a decision as to the level of access. I cannot say what the level of access to this file is or was subject to, you know, whoever had it. I did, when I became aware of the 2 G B media coverage, ask that the access be blocked for everyone within the organisation because obviously if something is published, the tendency is to jump on and have a look.
Can I just ask, who did make the decision prior to you making the further decision at what access would have, that this material would have been?
If it was a special interest matter, I would have made the decision.
No, sorry, but I'm asking in fact, in fact, not hypothetically, this particular matter before you determined to give it that higher blocked level, who had already determined the level of access in this manner?
I cannot answer that. I would have to look at the particular matter and see if it's recorded in the history.
Could you please take that on notice and see what you can do to assist us?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Chair, I've just got a couple of questions.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Highland, thanks for coming along. I wonder if I could take you to page 14 of the submission from the judge you were talking about? I assume that the parts that you were taking issue with, that you said weren't correct, are those that are numbered 1, 2, 3 at the bottom of the page, is that right? Paragraph 54?
And 56.
Oh, 56.
And 55.6.
Yeah, okay.
It's in its entirety.
Okay. So could you just in respect of 1, 2 and 3 in paragraph 54, just explain in what respect they're wrong?
Okay. Number one, the judge conflates who was interviewed and who was asked to be interviewed. I would know from the brief of evidence who was interviewed if they gave a statement.
Yeah.
I would have no idea who they asked to be interviewed.
Okay.
Okay. So she's wrong there.
And then paragraph two?
Paragraph two, Mrs. Carter's already asked those questions and I've already responded that my response was not to my knowledge.
Not to your knowledge, what?
If staff cooperated in the New South Wales Police West Investigation, he responded staff participated in the process. From the information I obtained from the N S W P F, the accurate answer to that question should have been staff were initially instructed to cooperate but later their cooperation was withdrawn.
And she's imputing that knowledge to you?
Exactly, and I'm refuting that.
Okay, yeah, good. And paragraph three, that's the same point, I suppose?
It is.
Could I just take you to appendix number two to the submission?
I don't think I've got that.
Okay, that's the transcript of the 2 G B interview?
Oh, yes, okay. I haven't read it, but if it's here, yes.
Yeah, appendix two, copy of a transcript. If you, if you look at the third line of the first part of Ben Fordham's, I was just going to ask, is that the pseudonym as far as you know?
I don't know.
Okay. Oh, that's my question.
Just while you're in that line of questioning, the other thing that is offensive is question 56, submission 56, where Her Honour impunes to me that I knew the effect of these proceedings or the disclosure on her and she infers some level of malifides on my part. Reading from her email to me, which I checked this morning, dated the 28th of March, "I would like in due course to make a submission to you on the damage that the disclosure of that information that was not only sensitive but was also misleading if not false, has done to me personally." That's not telling me what the damage was to her. What she is asking for is for her views to be heard. I facilitated that with Norton Rose. I find it incredibly offensive that this judge has inferred that I knew what the impact on her was and did nothing about it.
Is there any other specific things that are in that submission that you'd like to correct?
As I've said, I've only had the briefest of skims and I think that the Director will, I may be saying the wrong thing here, but I, the office would like the opportunity to do a written response to this submission with the fullness of time and the ability to reflect on what it is.
Just going to ask you one other thing. There's a reference in this submission, I don't have the paragraph number as I speak, but there's a reference in there to the police having told the judge, oh, actually it's at paragraph 32. Yeah, paragraph 32 on page 10 and it's the first point there. It says, "Other than the junior media officer who said, who he said took the screenshot and provided it to a superior, the O D P P officers were no longer cooperating with the investigation." Do you have any knowledge about who the superior was?
The superior is the administrative officer, Level Seven.
Right, okay.
Can I just ask, how do you know that for certain?
What's that, sorry?
How do you know that for certain?
Well, the junior media officer is the Level Five. Their superior would be the senior media officer.
Well, you would think so, but how do you know that for certain? How was she not, this person, not referring to some other? Like superior is a very broad word for somebody more senior, isn't it?
It is.
And so who is more, who is the superior, the superior to the Level Seven?
The Level Seven, I believe it's a PLA within the Director's Chambers.
Right. And so how do you know that this person wasn't referring to that person?
I don't.
Right, okay. So you, you don't know that it's the Level Seven. You're assuming that?
I'm assuming it's the Level Seven.
So just for clarity, and I think this is probably established elsewhere, but was it the person who took the screenshot or was it the superior who then provided it to the radio station?
My understanding is it was the superior.
The superior, okay. And...
Well...
The Level Seven, you mean?
Yes, yes.
We don't know, yes.
My interpretation of superior, yes.
I understand, thank you.
And just again for the sake of clarity, is the junior media officer the person who declined to attend this morning? Or is that the superior media officer?
It's not the... The person was not one of those invited to attend.
Right, so the person who provided it to 2 G B was not one of the people invited?
No, no, no. The person who, the admin Level Five was not invited to attend.
Right, okay. That's the person who took the screenshot?
Allegedly, yes.
And so the person who forwarded it to 2 G B was the person who was invited to attend? Is that right?
Again, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
So does the person who took the photo of the screenshot, does that person still, is that person still in the employ of the Office of the Department of Public Prosecutions?
Officer, the Director of Public Prosec...
Director of Public, sorry?
Yes.
Okay.
And is it your understanding that the Level Five Person was acting on the direction of the Level Seven Person?
That is what is in her statement, yes.
Sorry, which statement is this?
Her police statement that was in the brief of evidence.
Thank you. And is that why the Level Five Person was not counselled?
I do not know because as I've said, I'm not responsible for the media function in the office.
Who is responsible for that function?
It sits within the Director's Chambers, as I said in my opening statement.
And so who would be the appropriate person if we wanted to speak to somebody further?
Well, I would assume the Director could nominate who would be the appropriate person to speak to.
Thank you. Look, one last question from me and it's in relation, for your information, to an answer given to supplementary question 216, if you want to find that.
The question went to asking for an explanation of the chain of communications between the taking of that screenshot and the final disclosure, and the answer appears to be that the ODPP cannot explain the chain of communication. We clearly know the chain had at least two persons involved now, the level five and the level seven. I'm just wondering exactly what was investigated, if the process by which information was obtained, considered, transmitted, was not part of the subject of that investigation?
Which investigation?
Well, the.
Are you talking about the police or the internal?
No, the investigation that was, the internal investigation that I understand was briefed out to Norton Rose Fulbright.
Again, Mrs. Carter, I am not privy to that because that is not within my area of responsibility.
Uh, so who prepared the answer to supplementary question two one six?
It would be the director's chambers.
And would somebody in the director's chambers be privy to, to that investigation?
I do not know whether that person had read the material or not.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any more questions? Finished?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your evidence, Mr. Highland.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The secretariat will be in contact with you. I don't think you took anything in relation to questions on notice.
There was one question on notice in relation to whether a, what the restriction, restriction of the access level was to the matter in question within the organisation.
All right, thank you very much. The secretariat will be in contact with you in relation to a reply.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for coming, Ms. Dowling. I'm sorry, we're running a little bit late.
Yes, sorry.
Deliberately beforehand, ran a bit longer than expected. Would you like to start by making a short, first of all, we have to swear you in.
Thank you. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Would you like to make a short opening statement?
I would, thank you.
Thank you.
This inquiry purports to be concerned with the statutory identity protections for children involved in the criminal justice system. Prior to Wednesday this week, it was my understanding that the purpose of this inquiry and my appearance before it was to inquire into the operation of legislation protecting the identity of children involved in the criminal justice system. However, on Wednesday, I was put on notice by the committee that my evidence was likely to concern a particular case in which my office was involved and the events that followed that case. At about five PM yesterday, the committee, this committee posted a submission by Judge Wass dated twenty-eight November twenty twenty-five. This committee has never provided me with that submission, or told me of the existence of that submission or the contents of it, or asked me to address any allegation in that submission. Judge Wass's submission is directed solely at Judge Wass's personal grievance with me and my office arising from a single case that has already been subject to extensive scrutiny and examination, including a police investigation that uncovered no breach of the law. The bulk of the issues canvassed in Judge Wass's submission could not possibly fall within the terms of reference of this committee. Allowing these grievances to be examined under the guise of a committee inquiry is not appropriate use of this committee's powers and privileges and amounts to a de facto parliamentary inquiry into the conduct of officers at the ODPP under the guise of an examination of the operation of legislation. The current circumstances involve a gross denial of procedural fairness. In particular, there is nothing in the terms of reference to suggest this is an inquiry into the conduct of the director or of ODPP staff. The invitation to appear was extended to me and my staff on Friday last week, when the committee was in possession of Judge Wass's submission, ostensibly to give evidence about the operation of the legislation in accordance with the terms of reference. It was only on Wednesday, as I said, that an indication was given obliquely through an email that the committee had an interest in this particular case. The evening before I was due to give evidence, a previously confidential submission was released. The submission is sixty-eight pages in length. It was not provided to me, as I said before, but instead was posted on your website after the close of business. That submission includes serious allegations against me and my staff. It goes so far as to suggest that I and other senior officers should be removed from our statutory offices. The fact that this submission has been in the, in the possession of this committee since twenty-eight October twenty twenty-five, but has never been provided to me, and instead was made public out of hours the day before I was to give evidence, is extraordinary and it constitutes a gross denial of procedural fairness. The committee's failure to provide the submission to me and to Mr. Highland, the Solicitor for Public Prosecutions, is deeply unfair. Indeed, I go so far as to say the denial of procedural fairness by this committee is disgraceful. I will endeavour to assist the committee today as best I can. However, in light of the lack of procedural fairness afforded to me, there will be limitations on what I can answer. I expect as a minimum of fairness that this committee will provide, will permit my office to provide a further written submission to the committee at a later date, responding to the serious allegations made in Judge Wass's submissions and addressing the multiple factual and legal inaccuracies that it contains. The submission contains at appendix six an image of an alleged file note containing third or perhaps fourth-hand hearsay, making an allegation that I instructed someone to leak confidential information to two GB. I gave no such instruction. I would now like to make some comments concerning that case, which I hope will clarify what occurred and assist the committee. I'm aware that on the eleventh of October twenty twenty-four at Tari District Court, a young person whose name cannot be published was sentenced by Judge Wass for two offences of aggravated break and enter, one that included the sexual touching of a very elderly woman. Very shortly after the sentencing proceedings, I was told by senior lawyers and the senior witness assistance officer at our Newcastle office that the judge had invited the young person to conduct a welcome to country ceremony at the beginning of the sentence proceedings. This was a highly unusual event, which as far as I'm aware, had not occurred previously in any court of New South Wales and has not occurred since. Contrary to the suggestion of Judge Wass in her submission, a welcome to country is not evidence because it's not relevant to any issue in the sentence proceedings. It is a ceremonial event and has cultural significance for the individual and the offender involved in that case. The fact of the young person performing the welcome to country was widely discussed amongst the legal community, both within and outside the ODPP. It rapidly became notorious. I discussed the number, the matter with a number of ODPP staff, including the ODPP's First Nations Project Officer. It was conveyed to me that ODPP First Nations staff and members of the First Nations committee in Tari, community in Tari were distressed with what had occurred. While the person was of First Nations background, I was informed that he was not on his own country and so couldn't perform a welcome. He was not a respected member of the local community, and as I mentioned, he was being sentenced for a very serious offence of a sexual nature against a very elderly woman. A welcome to country is an important and solemn right, and while it may be entirely appropriate in some judicial settings, it was regarded by many as not appropriate in these circumstances. I'm also aware that on the twenty-fifth of October twenty twenty-four, the two GB radio host Ben Fordham discussed this case on his programme. As I understand, Mr. Fordham was highly critical of the judge for inviting the young offender to perform a welcome to country at his own sentence proceedings. Importantly, at no time did Mr. Fordham or any other media outlet publish the name of or identifying information of the young person involved. Shortly before the story was broadcast, I became aware from the ODPP media manager that two GB might be interested in the story. At this time, I did not know how two GB knew about the judge inviting the young person to give the welcome to country. On a date following the broadcast, I became aware that a report had been made to New South Wales Police concerning the provision of a purportedly confident, of purportedly confidential information to two GB allegedly by the ODPP. I was informed that police intended to investigate whether any offence had occurred. As would be expected, I confirmed with police that I would assist their investigation to the extent that I was able to do so. I'm also aware that at some point thereafter, the fact that an investigation was being conducted was leaked to the media. I'm aware of this because my office received a number of media inquiries about the investigation. I do not know who notified the media of the police investigation. I am now aware that prior to twenty-five October twenty twenty-four, the ODPP's media manager spoke to someone associated with two GB about the judge inviting the young person to give a welcome to country on the understanding that they may wish to run a story about it. Before the broadcast on the twenty-fifth of October, I was not, however, aware that that conversation had taken place. I am now also aware that the media manager provided a screenshot of the ODPP case management system to someone associated with two GB. That screenshot contained details of the case, including the young person's name. Provision of that screenshot did not involve any offence. At that time, the media manager was relatively new in her role and had only worked at the ODPP for about ten weeks. I wish to make it clear that at no time did I direct or ask that the media manager provide the story to two GB. At no time did I approve the provision of a screenshot of the ODPP case management system to any external person. I was not even aware of the provision of the screenshot until after the commencement of the police investigation. On the twenty-first of March twenty twenty-five, New South Wales Police advised the ODPP that they had concluded their investigation. Police took no further action, reflecting, as I said, that no offence had been committed. While I considered it clear that there had been no breach of the law, I did consider that the provision of confidential or privileged information held by my office to the media may constitute misconduct under the Government Sector Employment Act twenty thirteen. The act requires in such a case that the employer investigate the circumstances of possible misconduct. Accordingly, as required by the act, I instructed an independent law firm to conduct an investigation into the possible misconduct. That investigation was completed in June twenty twenty-five. I then requested a further report from then-acting Deputy Director and former Supreme Court Justice Helen Wilson, Senior Counsel, concerning what action should be taken. Ms. Wilson advised that there should be a finding of misconduct made against the media manager and that they should be administered a caution against any future disclosure of privileged or protected information. A caution was administered to the media manager by then Deputy Director, now District Court Judge Frank Veltro, Senior Counsel. I was not personally involved in the investigation of this matter or the disciplinary process. In budget estimates in February this year, I was asked questions about this matter. At that time, the matter was still under investigation by police and it was not appropriate for me to comment. In budget estimates in August, as you have already heard this morning, the solicitor for public prosecutions Craig Highland was asked about this issue and gave evidence. To the extent that it involved an instance of internal misconduct by an ODPP employee, this has been thoroughly investigated and scrutinised, including by New South Wales Police, and all appropriate action has been taken by my office. That's my statement.
Thank you. Thank you very much for, for that statement. And I do absolutely understand the limitation in time and very much appreciate the effort and work that you've put into assisting the committee. We'll now move to questions and, Ms. Carter. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dowling. A couple of questions in relation to the internal investigation. So did that focus entirely on ascertaining if there'd been a breach of the Government Sector Employee Act? Or did that also look more broadly at what steps could be taken to ensure that similar breaches didn't occur in the future?
The former.
And is there any intention to consider more broadly how to protect against this type of disclosure in the future?
The, I need to say at the outset, I only read the report of the external law firm and the, and Justice Wilson this week when it became apparent to me that that's what this committee was interested in. Because Judge Veltro, Deputy Director Veltro had been, had had carriage of that aspect. So he had been liaising, I withdraw that, he had considered the report and administered the caution. To answer your question, Ms. Carter, that will have to be considered.
At, at what point is that going to be considered?
I would imagine in the near future.
Thank you. And the investigation and to the extent to which you're aware, the police investigation, I understand that that was focusing on section fifteen A. Was any consideration given to section sixty-two of the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act?
You would have to ask police.
Okay, but what about your own internal investigation?
Not that I've been aware of.
Is, is that a matter that concerns you?
I'm, I have to take that on notice.
All right, if you could take.
Refresh my memory.
Sorry, I've got a copy of it here.
That's okay, I'll take that on notice, thank you.
If you can take it on notice, that'd be very good. So I'm just trying to get the, the timeline straight. So you first became aware of the events in the court at Tari shortly after they had occurred?
Yeah, on, on the same day.
On the same day? And what was your view as to whether any action needed to flow from that information when you had it?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure of the relevance of that question, what my view was. I was quite taken aback. So I was told by the lawyers who were in the, in the proceedings, and bear in mind, I am the client of those lawyers. And I thought that what had happened was quite extraordinary.
And when was the first conversation you had with the, the media manager or anybody in the media unit in relation to what had occurred in Tari?
I don't recall.
Is there any way of refreshing your memory in relation to that?
No, the, the, there are many, many conversations that take place in, in the office about many things that are going on in the office.
But I, I believe, and I may have misheard, that you earlier said that you hadn't spoken to the media officer until after the information had been broadcast by two GB?
Hmm, that, that's not correct. That was not my evidence. There were conversations before, before the story ran in two GB about, about the welcome to country.
So you had had conversations with the, with the level seven media officer?
Yes.
Thank you. And I understand that questions had been put to you from the Australian in relation to a number of matters, I believe on the Thursday. Did, was the media manager involved in liaising between the Australian and yourself in relation to those questions?
Um, yeah, she would have been.
Okay. So you were aware of those questions and she was aware of those questions?
The line of command, if for want of a better phrase, which is not rigid, is that the media manager reports to a principal legal advisor and then through to a deputy director who was Judge Veltro.
Yes.
And then on an ad hoc basis as necessary, my, I would be consulted.
So the likely chain would have been then that questions would have come to that media manager who would have moved it up the chain and then obviously those questions to you, they would have needed to go to you. Okay. And so I think the timeline was you received the questions on the Thursday and then the disclosure was on two GB on the Friday, and then the story was in the Australian on the Saturday. So would the media person have been managing both the disclosure to two GB and those questions from the Australian at the same time?
Um, well, as I say, I don't know about the disclosure to two GB.
Sorry, I, I, I thought you had just said that you had actually discussed the general issue with the media manager in relation to Tari.
I, she, I had talked about the welcome to country and the notoriety of that story, but I was not aware of the disclosure to two GB.
And so the media manager who clearly operates under, as you described it, a chain of command, it's sort of going up several steps ultimately to you as necessary. Are you aware whether the media manager escalated the decision to release information to anybody in that chain of command?
No, I'm not aware of that.
Okay. Who would be aware of that?
Well, it, it would have had to happen for anyone to be aware of it, and I'm, yeah, I'm not aware of it.
Okay. So, so you're, so you're suggesting that the media officer of our own volition chose to disclose without, a new media officer without checking with anybody senior?
Ms. Carter, you often do this to me and you suggest that I have suggested things. I haven't suggested that. I'm answering your questions.
No, but I'm, I'm trying to clarify and really understand what it is that you're saying, Ms. Dowling. So you've told us that she was relatively new in her position, told us that there's a chain of command, which she operates. You've indicated that you're unable to indicate whether it was escalated, and I'm asking you. and I'm asking you how usual that would be for a relatively new person who sits at least at the midpoint in a chain of command to of their own volition, release information like this to a media outlet?
I can't answer that question. She conducts multiple, multiple conversations with multiple media outlets at any given point in time. That is her job. She's having discussions and conversations with journalists all the time, as far as I'm aware. Many of those are not escalated beyond her. She is the senior media manager, so everybody else involved in that is legal. And I'm not aware, as I said before, I'm not aware of anything else.
The media officer would have been aware of the questions from the Australian and they would have also been aware of the information in relation to Tari at the same time because they were-
Yes, they're unrelated things, as I understand, but simultaneous.
Okay, thank you. And how usual is it for media officers in your experience to access information about particular cases from the Matters site?
That's their job, they do that all the time. The principal, the principal role or the principal task of the media officers at the ODPP is to fact check things for journalists. And they do that by way of accessing the Matters database.
Ms Dowling, can I just ask though, did you, like, a media officer actually providing a screenshot, is that something that a media officer would normally do?
No, that was, that was the subject of a finding of misconduct under the GSE Act and that was not something that was known to me until well after the event had happened. And I can anticipate and answer the questions that you're going to ask. There was a formal caution delivered and a formal process of counselling that was delivered by Deputy Director Veltro.
And just in terms of the, the level of security or confidence that particular case had, I know that you would have heard the questions directed to Mr Highland. Do you have knowledge about what level of security that particular case had at the time or around that time the screenshot was taken?
That can be confirmed, but there is nothing about that case of which I'm aware at this point in time that would suggest to me that it would have had anything other than unrestricted access. The fact that it involves a young person is not of itself a factor that we then put a restricted access on it. And the reason for that is that this is an operational database that is used by our administrative staff and our legal staff and multiple lawyers and admin officers need to have access to that database in the life of a particular matter and even to have regard to it when they are preparing other matters. So operationally, that ease of access is important.
And just a little bit further to what Ms Carter was asking, in terms of the circumstances, you've made it very clear that there was clearly discussions within the office about this particular matter and what took place during the proceedings. Did you ever look yourself and familiarise yourself with the transcript of those proceedings?
We don't have a transcript of the proceedings. I understand that we have the audio recording of the proceedings and a transcript has been made by my office from that audio. I haven't, I haven't read that in full. My assistants have.
Thank you. And so are you aware, so at the moment, this idea, according to two GB, is that a welcome to country was performed?
I do, I do, I can assist you in that regard. The judge repeatedly referred to it as a welcome to country. The young person was giving evidence remotely from a youth detention facility that was not in Tari. And the young person understandably gave an acknowledgement of country.
So I'm just wondering why you, in your evidence, have referred to it as a welcome to country consistently? Is there any particular-
Because that's what the judge called it.
Right, but you're now correcting this record here and assisting the committee by making it clear and dispelling what two GB and everybody else has been saying for months and months on end that a young person somehow performed some big ceremonial welcome to country when in fact, your evidence is, it was a couple of words perhaps acknowledging country?
That wasn't my evidence, because I just told you that I haven't got a transcript. It was an acknowledgement of country and I believe the transcript is annexed to Judge Wass's submission, if I'm not correct.
And so your evidence is that you're aware and have been for some time that it wasn't a welcome to country?
No, I think I was, I, I became aware of the actual wording of what the young person said in the last couple of days.
Right, and how, what, how, how did that happen?
Because one of my staff listened to the audio and made a transcript of it.
Right, so up until this point though, you had had no interest or concern to find out what had in fact happened in those proceedings that two GB had broadcasted at large in a particular character and way?
Well, I wouldn't agree with that at all.
Okay, so you did other things to familiarise yourself or to find out the actual facts?
The question that you just put to me, Ms Higgins, is that I had no interest and I disagree with that question.
Fantastic. Could you explain to me what your interest before two days was? To clarify and familiarise yourselves with the facts?
You need to understand with respect that my office is extremely busy and I am extremely busy. So I was aware that the judge had invited, in her words, a young person to do a welcome to country and that he had, he had done what was initially was conveyed to me as a welcome to country. We didn't have a transcript at that point in time.
Sorry, can I just stop you there if it's okay? When you say the judge had, where, where did that happen?
That came from the lawyers who were in the-
Oh, so not the judge herself, that was the lawyers who told you that the judge had invited the young person to do a welcome to country?
Yeah.
Right, and you never saw to investigate whether that was true or not?
I asked for a transcript, a transcript wasn't available. I think the tapes were available and somebody in my office confirmed that they had listened to the tapes and that that had happened.
Right.
And that was certainly the notation that was made on the report of the proceedings on the database by the team that were in court at the time.
So I know you'll think this is controversial, but can I just put to you, just in full frankness, further to your evidence that this was a matter that built some controversy and there was a lot of discussion in your office and surrounding. Was there, was the tone of that, that there was this almost panic or an improprietary about what had happened and that that was the tone of the office at the time?
Well, I wouldn't agree with panic, I would agree with impropriety.
And do you still think that now that you've listened to the words?
I do. I don't think that the answer, you know, I don't think what I can, what I think about this is relevant to the terms of inquiry of this committee, but I do think there was a grave impropriety in that.
And can I just be clear? The only reason that I have remotely any interest in this is because of a, the potential breach of the law that is designed to protect young people in criminal proceedings.
Well, Ms Higgins, there has been no breach of the law as it stands, as you know, because fifteen A prohibits the publication to the public or a section of the public of a name or information that can identify a young person. And as the lack of charges laid by the police indicates, that hasn't happened.
So does, and was there, is it your understanding that the police had some difficulty with completing a full investigation because they determined that this was not an offence where they could issue particular warrants or-
I have no knowledge of that.
Okay, can I just ask you, have you got Judge Wass's submission in front of you?
I have, but I haven't had time to finish.
No, I understand that and I appreciate that. Can I just ask you to go to appendix two of that submission?
Yep.
And line three of that submission, does that identify the particular young person involved, to your knowledge?
It does not.
Is that some kind of pseudonym or is that?
That's not the name of the young person.
Thank you very much. And so when you say that no breach of the law has occurred here, that is because you say, sorry, that is because the police did not find the breach of the law, is that your-
Because there has not been a publication to the public or a section of the public of the name or any information that can identify the young person.
And so you, and you've looked at that transcript and you've listened to that two GB article? The two GB story that was broadcast on twenty five October?
I haven't seen the transcript of it until today and I haven't had a chance to read this.
Thank you. And did you at all listen to at any point in time the broadcast on twenty five October twenty twenty four?
Yes, I did.
You did? And you don't think that there is material in that broadcast that could identify the young person in general terms, not specific terms?
No, I don't think so.
Not in his community or any other community?
Not, not on the basis of what I know.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of the actual commission of an offence, that is only because two GB chose not to broadcast material that the DPP representative had given to two GB, is that your view?
I'm not going to speculate on what could have happened to cause a commission of an offence.
No, no, I'm talking about what in fact happened.
There was no offence committed, in fact.
And that's because in fact, the two GB broadcasters, both apparently Ben Fordham and Ray Hadley, didn't disclose the whole of the information that they had been provided by somebody within your office?
It appears that way.
Yeah, thank you. And so in terms of the caution that was provided to the officer within your office, what determined to your, to the best of your ability, what determined that this person should be cautioned rather than discharged?
The, the subject of, that process was discussed in the report by the external investigator. It is subject to legal professional privilege because it contains employment law advice and I don't waive that privilege at the moment. So I am not prepared to answer that question.
I see. And so was that, was, was any of that internal material that you commissioned, was any of that material provided to the police as part of their investigation?
That happened afterwards.
It happened afterwards. Has there been any discussion around whether or not there should be any further engagement with the police around the issue in terms of any material that may have come to light?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
A couple more questions. In relation to the question of a potential breach of fifteen A, I wonder if you are aware of the answers given to supplementary questions, one nine five to two oh two and one nine six, sorry, the answer to one nine five, sorry, the answer to one nine six, what was provided to two GB but not published by them? That answer is, two GB was provided information that identified the young person. So clearly the name was released to two GB.
In the screenshot.
Yes, so clearly that name was released. And question one nine eight?
Can I just?
Yeah, please.
You know, add an adjective, it was unauthorised, that release was unauthorised.
But I, I think this goes to the number of the question.
Me or Mr Highland?
No, this goes to the number of it and in a sense, this is a very important case study for how these provisions are actually working, which is why we are so interested in this and, and the chain and how it could have happened and what steps are now being taken as a result of this. And if you've had an opportunity to read some of the other submissions, the Law Society submission in relation to jigsaw identification is becoming an increasingly important issue. And it is a fact from material we received from you that authorised or unauthorised, advertent or inadvertent, the name of a young offender was actually given from your office to a radio station. They chose not to produce that name because also information given was that there was no, no deal, no undertaking, no basis on which we'll give you this, but please don't use the name. And I would, I am very concerned by that. I would expect frankly that your office would be concerned by that.
Also concerned by that, absolutely. Which is why there has been a caution, counselling, training of that person.
You indicated before that you were, that you tried to get a transcript, but you've been able to get an audio copy. What was your intention in seeking a transcript of the matter?
Well, just to find out what happened.
And with a view to what?
Knowing what happened.
Okay, and no information or anything? No, no idea of what might flow from that?
Well, the first step is always to find out what happened.
Okay, and then with a copy of the transcript, nothing was done until the material was disclosed to two GB?
What, what do you mean, nothing was done?
Well, that's what I'm, it's a question. So you had the transcript, you understood what had happened. The, you're discussing things with the media officer in broad terms about Tari, but there's no decision by your office that there is a next step? And the next step that happens is disclosure to the radio?
No, I did ask my First Nations staff whether, whether the community, the First Nations community around Tari wanted something more to be done by my office about it. So I, the first, the first response back from First Nations staff was that they were very uncomfortable and upset that this had happened. So my approach with issues that impact First Nations community is always to consult them and be guided by them as to what they would like me as the director to do. So I tasked my First Nations project officer and one of our First Nations Crown prosecutors with consulting with community. They didn't get back to me with anything, so I didn't take that issue further formally.
And was your prosecutor in court that day aware that the judge was going to issue this invitation to the offender?
I'm told no.
Okay, so you understand that there was no conversation between legal counsel and the judge as to the opportunity to demonstrate what this young offender had been learning by providing an acknowledgement of country?
The account that has been given to me, which I checked this morning when I became aware of what it was exactly that you were interested in, is that shortly before the sentence proceedings occurred, the judge called the two lawyers, the defence lawyer and the prosecution lawyer into the judge's anteroom, which of course is not recorded, and told the parties that she was going to ask the young person to conduct a welcome to country. They then left the anteroom and went straight into the sentence proceedings. There was, I'm instructed that there was no invitation to seek instructions or to consult community.
Thank you. I just want to go back to section sixty two of the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act.
I'm sorry that I don't have that in front of me and I haven't considered it.
To take for reference, it's just that I, I am concerned about the adequacy of any investigation which hasn't considered section sixty two. And so I'm happy to provide a copy.
I can get it up on my computer.
Yeah, all right, fine, anyway, but perhaps, and I would, I would appreciate on notice if you could indicate whether that was a matter that was considered or whether the external legal advisers that you engaged also raised that as a matter that should be of concern.
Okay.
Okay, I think questions come to an end.
Um, can I just ask, um, just, so in terms of the offence of the, um, um, the publication of a child's name, um, and the particular offence, so is it not, like, is the express intention of sending a child's name to the media, it, does that not? Uh, I, clearly it concerns everyone, but where does, and acknowledging the police's findings and acknowledging that my understanding is they were quite restricted and limited in how far they could go. Gosh, it sounds like the building's falling down. Um, the, um, um, do you not think that it, is there not some publication in the act of pressing send on the, the device that then provides that?
The act, the section provides for a definition
Hmm.
of publication and it's publication to the public or a section of the public.
So is it not a section of the public?
Can I just finish please, Miss Dowling?
Yes, sorry, apologies. Yes, please do.
Section ten of the act makes it quite clear that the act is not intended to, to prevent media reporting on things that happen, uh, in proceedings concerning children and young persons. So there is this limitation on publication to the public. Uh, and there is a decision in a case called IP and the Queen, it's a Dolly Inka Pak's case, that considers expressly or holds expressly that the section and the act was not intended to prevent the, the communication of the name or the identity of the young person to pe- to people who are, who already know that or have a, a purpose in, in knowing it. Um, so, uh, you know, I, I think the terms of the section, the way it's been construed by the courts speak for themselves. My expressing a view on what publish could mean if it was defined in a different way is not going to assist the committee.
Hmm. Do you think that there is, um, um, are you aware of other provisions in term, like clearly, and you expressed it very clearly, that this was not authorized, in fact, this was an unauthorized disclosure? Um, to that extent, and I accept there's the government sector employee legislation and there has been a caution. Um, have you considered any other provisions that may apply to such conduct? The, um, I'm, I'm just thinking of one at the moment, section sixty two of the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act that refers to corrupt disclosure or the use of personal information by public sector employees and/or officials, sorry?
Well, I, I don't think that this was corrupt. I think this was inadvertent and
Inadvertent.
It was, I think the fact that the name was, um, was included in the disclosure was not, I, I imagine that the significance of that was not understood
Yes.
by, by the media officer. Um, I don't know.
Um, and so just to confirm in terms of your evidence, in terms of your office, the executive office, who was at that time responsible for that level seven media officer? Who were their direct, uh, executive report line?
Yes, a principal legal advisor?
Yep.
And, uh, deputy director Velcro.
Um, when you say the principal legal advisor, um, is that a specific person in the office?
Yep.
Right. And is it your understanding that they had any knowledge before the sending of that material, the unauthorized sending? Are you aware or do you have any knowledge whatsoever of what they knew at the time of the sending of that screenshot?
Of the sending of the screenshot, I, I don't, I, my understanding is they did not know anything about the sending of the screenshot until much later.
Um, and it's your understanding and it's your evidence today that nobody, uh, more se- nobody other than the level seven and the level five knew of the sending of the screenshot within your office?
That's correct.
And the first that, the first that, um, you became aware of the sending of the screenshot, do you recall that?
Look, I don't, I don't clearly recall it, but it was quite a while later on. Um, I think it was during the police investigation.
Right, but you, and so, wh- do you have any recollection of when the first time you heard the, um, the broadcast on the twenty, the, the twenty fifth October?
Yeah, it would have been on the day.
On the day?
Yes.
And so when, um, so did you raise suspicion at that point? Because I, from memory, the, um, I haven't, the, I've read the transcript, but it talks about we have this information from a very, um, credible or reputable source.
Yeah.
Did that trigger anything for you in terms of?
I, I understood from that that the story had been confirmed by the ODPP to the journalist, which is what ru- routinely happens
I see.
that we are asked to confirm, you know, what things that have happened in court. And I assumed that the, that the media team had confirmed that. I didn't know how that had been confirmed.
I see. And, um, and still, does it concern you now that there has been so much misinformation about the performance of a welcome to country in a courtroom? When in fact what actually happened was, uh, somebody acknowledged country and it was, as I understand it from Judge Wassa's, um, submission, it was done on the intention that related to the young persons, um, that they had, it was part of the evidence?
But it wasn't, as I've said before, it couldn't be part of the evidence because it, it's not a, a relevant factor in sentencing proceedings. So, and, uh, my understanding of the transcript is not that it formed part of the evidence. It's the judge that called it a welcome to country. Um.
Yes, but the
The fact that the young person cor- corrected that, self-corrected that and gave an acknowledgement, um, I, I don't think makes a substantive difference.
Um, sorry, so you don't think there's a substantive difference between somebody acknowledging country or
No, I didn't, I didn't say that. I said, I don't think it makes a substantive difference to the issue as it was reported.
Right. Okay.
Uh, just a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, chair.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Miss Dowling, for your evidence. Um, in terms of the late provision of the statement and the procedural fairness issues, just wanted to give you an opportunity to directly respond to, in particular, uh, the file note uh, that is attached to Judge Wassa's statement, which suggests that, and look, it's third-hand hearsay or second-hand hearsay or something, but it suggests that, uh, that you directed. It could be fourth-hand. Um, it suggests that, uh, you directed the media officer to provide that information to the media. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to respond directly to that.
Thank you, I deny that.
Yeah. And, um, just to clarify some earlier evidence, do you recall whether you talked to the, uh, to the media officer in question about, uh, what had occurred in the proceedings prior to the publication of the story on two GB?
Oh, yes, I would have.
And in those conversations, did you authorize the disclosure of any information?
No.
Um, and would it have been within the sort of inherent scope of her position to provide some information?
As I said before, a significant part of her role is to talk to the media about things that have happened in court. Um, so it depen- it depends on, on the particular interaction. But it would not be outside the scope to confirm what had happened in the, in the proceedings.
Yeah. So do you know if the DPP was two GB's source for the story? In the sense that, are you aware whether the DPP was who sort of gave the story to two GB, to use the vernacular?
That is my understanding now.
That's your understanding now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It was not my understanding until, you know, I think two days ago.
Yeah. Um, and is it normally the practice in the office that, uh, the director herself would handle all sort of media stories in the sense of the media officer reporting directly to you, you authorizing them?
No.
So the, uh, so the person in that position's got a degree of autonomy to sort of operate within the guidelines, but to operate within some sort of autonomy?
Yes.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
And, and I've just got, uh, two very simple follow-ups. Do you, um, so do you now, with this experience, do you think the provisions within the law are satisfactory in terms of their operation and, uh, function to protect ch- children or young people who are part of legal proceedings?
I do, and they've worked, you know, response, this responsible media outlet did not breach the provisions of fifteen A.
Um, and then the follow-up to that is what have you done, um, in terms of internally, uh, with the office?
As I said, the, the pe- the people in the media team, the media team's only got two people in it, um, have been counseled, they've been, uh, received more training on, uh, in particular on, on client legal privilege because that was privileged information. Everything on that database is legally privileged.
Yeah.
Um, so there's been, uh, an emphasis on training staff in relation to privilege, confidentiality, the ODPP code of conduct and the importance of not breaching the code or breaching, uh, waiving, um, the director's privilege.
So just for clarity on that last question, both the level five and the level seven officer have been counseled or just the level seven officer?
Uh, I think the formal counselling was confined to the level seven officer. But, um, ne- necessarily because of the nature of this, um, matter,
Mm-hmm.
uh, the police involvement, this committee's involvement, the, um, the level five has also gained a deep understanding of the uh, restrictions and requirements in relation to the handling of information.
Mr. Highland previously indicated that this was an outlier and, uh, do you have any, have you conducted any investigations to establish whether this is actually an outlier or whether this is the one that has just received extensive public attention?
Uh, I have no reason to think that there are other instances.
Have you looked to see if there are other instances?
Well, it's not really feasible to look for things that, of which there would be no evidence.
So, um, do you have any cultural concerns about when you consider, um, because what we've heard today is that if you've got a media officer who doesn't believe they have to check with a chain of command to release very sensitive information, including a name, uh, are you concerned about cultural problems?
No, I think this occurred at a time when the, um, individuals in that media team were new to the office um, and had come from a non-legal background. Um, I think that, um, reflection on, on these events, um, warrants greater, a, a greater in, uh, adherent, uh, the ensuring that the training is delivered, that it's understood and that is particularly important for, um, for people who come, perhaps come from a non-legal background. I think that is one of the learnings for my office from this. Um, and, you know, making sure that this doesn't happen again is very important.
Just one more from me, if I could. We've sort of left hanging this question of section sixty two of the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act nineteen ninety eight, which I must admit I was not aware of prior to this morning. Um, just curious if you're, um, aware of that provision and if you think it's got any relevance to these matters?
I'll have to take that question on notice.
Yeah, so are you aware of it or?
Well, I'm aware that it exists, but I haven't considered its application.
And what's your understanding of the scope of it?
I'm not prepared to answer questions on that because I'm not prepared.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we've come to the end of the questioning time. Thank you very much for coming today, Miss Dowling. I note that there are, I think, one or more questions taken on notice and the secretary will be in contact with you in relation to your response.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, would you please confirm that, um, it's open to my office to file a further submission in response to the judge's submission?
I think so.
Thank you.
We need to determine, I'm sure it's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
And come back at, uh, what time is it now? Ten to five past tw- five past twelve?
Thank you.
Yeah, we're running a long way behind. Yeah, we're running a long way behind.
Chris Stath, Deputy Secretary, Courts, Tribunals and Service Delivery, Department of Communities and Justice. I solemnly, seriously and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Would you like to make a short opening statement?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. All right, we'll start questioning.
Okay.
Ms Carter?
Thank you for being here. Nice to see you again. You've, we've discussed this before at estimates and you've always indicated that it was subject to ongoing investigations, wasn't appropriate to look at it at this time. And in an answer to a question on notice about appropriate steps to ensure this breach does not happen again, the answer was all DCJ employees must adhere to the code of ethical conduct, report suspected breaches of the code to their manager, supervisor and/or the professional standards unit. Given this case study, do you think that's sufficient? Or do we, do we need to be doing more in this regard to make sure that there is a culture of not disclosing information about young offenders?
I think a culture of vigilance is always appropriate and if there's more that we can do to ensure protections, then that's obviously an important thing to consider. But in this particular case, I don't have a lot more to add in noting that this is something that occurred in a workplace in the DPP and not in the, not within DCJ directly.
Mm-hmm.
Did you, did I swear you in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I swore myself in.
Yeah, you did. Your experience, yeah. But reflecting on this and drawing lessons for DPP and across the broader DCJ and across the operation of courts and tribunals generally, what are the lessons that we can draw from this? Are you convinced, for example, that fifteen A is adequate on its face?
As you're aware, as a public servant, I can't discuss matters of policy. So I can't, I can't answer that question. But what I would indicate that section, section ten of that act as well, as has been previously indicated, indicates that members of the media can remain in proceedings, such as these proceedings. And so the name of an individual known to the media in and of itself occurs and the media, in my experience, are very knowledgeable of their obligations under the piece of legislation which they operate. And in this case, as again, has already been, evidence has been given, the media outlets' reporting on this matter did not breach existing legislation.
No. I guess the question that we're considering is just because it didn't breach existing law, does it flag any sort of change? Have you had an opportunity to look at any of the submissions, the one from FAMs or Legal Aid or any of those other submissions?
I have, but I would just reiterate that I can't comment on matters of policy.
Okay. I suppose the question is, an issue that I think is very interesting has been raised in a number of the submissions and I think we've seen evidence of it this morning. Breaches can happen, but then in terms of who's responsible? So yes, okay, somebody can report it to the police, but generally it's going to take somebody to report it to the police and then there will be an investigation or whatever. But, and do you think it would be an interesting policy issue to explore? If that's a question that you're able to answer, suggestions, for example, from Legal Aid that a body such as the Children's Guardian be given responsibility for, considering if there's been breaches and what appropriate step should be taken to manage breaches?
Look, apologies, Ms Carter, I can't, I can't answer that. My colleague, as you're aware, Paul McKnight, looks after the area of law reform and legal services and policy reform and legislation within DCJ. That's not my area. I'm responsible for court administration. I can't answer that question.
Okay, so if, if in your experience of court administration, an issue appears that may need further consideration, you would pass that to Mr McKnight?
So the, in terms of the particular examples that we've been discussing this morning, there are obligations under all staff within DCJ in relation to the code of ethical conduct as it applies to DCJ employees. Staff are very much aware of those obligations as part of our induction and ongoing training at DCJ and our obligations in terms of reporting and then the steps that occur if a report is made under the code.
Okay. Because one of the issues that arises here is the appropriate protections for young offenders. Other issues that clearly have arisen as a result of this disclosure is impact on independence of the judiciary, especially reputation of members of the judiciary. It's an established threat, considerable academic writing in relation to that and we've seen a fairly live example lived out in this case. And the answer was that DCJ unable to comment on the specific matter, which is an internal matter for the ODPP. Surely this is, the breach was an internal matter, but it has external consequences for the entire justice system. Who's responsible for that thinking about how we buttress what is tremendously important in our society? Rule of law, independence of the judiciary, respect for our system of justice?
I can just clarify, the answer that you, that I provide, we provided on the question on notice was DCJ is unable to comment on a specific matter which is internal matter for the DPP. The previous question which we took on notice was what was the outcome of the investigation? So I wasn't able to provide information on the outcome of the investigation.
Sorry, I thought this was a separate question then.
But if you could reframe the question, I'm happy to try to, try to address it if I can.
This, this specific example, while internal to the ODPP, had clear ramifications for our system of justice as a whole, for the known threat of reputational damage to judges on independence of the judiciary, which is one of the central components of a society based on rule of law. And who does the thinking about how we buttress our legal system for the protection of every member of our society?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I follow the logic within that question.
Okay, who in New South Wales is responsible for going, one of the most precious things we have is the rule of law, is a system of open justice. There are attacks on this. How do we buttress these so we can ensure the availability of these protections for every member of our society? Who does the thinking on that?
Oh, look, I think there's a number of organisations and agencies that are working every single day to uphold the rule of law in New South Wales.
So who in government does that thinking?
Who in government does that thinking? So it would fit within the Attorney General's portfolio.
Okay, and what assistance would the Attorney General draw from DCJ in relation to assisting him in that task?
As I was saying, there are a number of agencies that each and every day work very hard to ensure the rule of law in this state.
And they're internal to the government?
Both internal and external.
And they include?
They include DCJ, but they include, I would think many, many agencies would like to be included in that, in that list. I'm not, I wouldn't want to be listing and miss anyone else.
My question is very precise. We have seen a threat to independence of the judiciary unchecked.
Can you describe the threat to the independence of the judiciary?
The reputational damage, there's, are you familiar with the academic literature on the role of reputational damage and the impact this has on independence of the judiciary?
So I'm not familiar with what particular academic writing you might be referring to?
Okay, there's, there's significant. Are you suggesting that there are no rule of law issues that we need to consider here?
I'm just trying to understand what, what particular, you were indicating that there was an attack on an independent judicial officer?
Let's just jump over that because we can waste a lot of time on this, I think. Specifically, who in DCJ assists the Attorney General with thinking about how we buttress the rule of law to keep it strong in New South Wales?
So without, without obviously, for the benefit of everyone, the parliamentarians don't require this, but for the better. but for the benefit of everyone that might be listening, there are obviously separation of powers. The independent judiciary is an important tenet of our, of our rule of, rule of government. DCJ works in hand with, with the Minister of the Day and the Attorney General in relation to all aspects to do with court administration and policy relating to that portfolio.
I accept that's the best answer I'm going to get. I don't accept that it is a satisfactory answer. In fact, what worries me is that there doesn't appear to be anybody who's focusing on these issues and if we don't focus on these issues, we will live with the results and we will all be very much the losers of that.
I was just trying to clarify, I was just trying to clarify the issue that you were directly asking, that was all.
Who, who steps back and looks at aspects of the rule of law such as independence of the judiciary and whether there are threats to that and how they can be safeguarded against?
Again, I can't, I can't be more specific than what I've said. There are a number, a number of agencies and, and within, within, within government and external government.
On notice, could you provide a list of all of those agencies, please?
I think, I think that would be, there's, there's an exhaustive list of agencies and I, and I don't think.
Perhaps on notice, could you provide your top 10 of those agencies, please?
We'll, we'll certainly take it on notice. Thank you.
Can I just ask, to your knowledge, in your role and within the DCJ and the organisations, do you, have you ever come across concerns about the particular legal provision in the criminal proceedings relating to children's legislation about the publication and broadcast or, and the offence against in the nature of protecting young people?
Similar to this that we've been discussing today? No.
Nothing has ever arisen before, to your knowledge?
Not, not to my knowledge, no.
Is there, has there been any discussion within DCJ about whether, you know, about the knee, about the adequacy of the current law or the need to revisit the law and look at it?
If there was, I wouldn't be able to disclose that.
Fair enough. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you. Yes, please.
Just a comment from me, Mr. Dath. Thank you for coming along and I thank you for the bar course in 2015. Yes, that's correct. So my question is, have you seen the submission from the judge, Judge Wass?
I, I saw it last night when I was preparing for today's hearing.
So what she essentially says, among other things, is that the reporting of this case was not accurate, that it disseminated inaccurate information into the community, that it had an impact on her and I take her to be referring to social media comments perhaps, where people have responded to the reporting and adversely reflected on her. Just wondering if you could talk us through, what does courts administration or anyone in DCJ, what roles or organisations are there that help to correct erroneous information that's published about the courts in particular or about court decisions? Is there anything of that nature?
Sure. And, and I'll talk in a general nature, if I may, rather than talking about this particular, particular matter.
Sure.
Each, each of the courts and tribunals have a media team, either directly or indirectly, that look, that, that reports, sorry, I would draw that, that supports the court or tribunal. They obviously keep an eye and monitor various matters in relation to the media and, and I should probably place on record the hardworking media teams that work each day in courts administration are working with the media teams within other agencies to, to give fair and accurate reporting to the work of the courts and tribunals. To the extent if they see that there is something that they believe is inaccurately reported, they may, they may contact the head of jurisdiction, they may contact the individual judge or member or commissioner themselves and ask them if there was anything that needed to be corrected. They may discuss whether it's worth correcting, so if something is inaccurate, whether you essentially make a materiality test in terms of whether it's worth correcting it or not or some sort. In some cases, matters are, matters are addressed, in some cases matters are not addressed, even though they may be potentially inaccurate.
I, I recall last year, I think it was, the Chief Justice responded by way of a public statement, I think on two occasions. One in relation to industrial relations legislation and I think particulars of debate in the Parliament. And I think he may also, the Chief Justice, have responded to some bail issues. Is there any policy or guideline that guides heads of jurisdiction as to when to respond to public commentary or media commentary in the interests of a court?
It's a matter for an independent judiciary to, to do what they see fit at that time.
Yeah, so as far as you know, there's no existing guidelines or anything of that nature that guide them?
I'm not aware of anything along those lines. There may be internal discussions that the judiciary has amongst itself in terms of what it would like to do and when it would like to do that, but I'm not, not aware of that.
Yeah. And in terms of the media teams that the courts have, are they employees of the courts or employees of DCJ?
Employees of DCJ.
Of DCJ. And how sort of aggressive are they in terms of responding to what is considered to be inaccurate media coverage? Would they, for instance, issue statements in the name of the court, do interviews themselves, anything of that nature?
I wouldn't categorise my colleagues as aggressive in any way, but what they would.
I don't mean aggressive in a pejorative sense. I mean, how proactively do they respond?
So they, they, as I said, they would, excuse me, take, take soundings from the people that are involved in that particular matter and understand how they would like the, to respond and who responds and the name that is then attached to that will be a matter for the discussion as well. So in some cases, it may be that it would be issued by, you know, a media spokesperson on behalf of DCJ. It may be that an individual judicial officer, on rare occasions, wants to put their name to something, but that would be a rare occasion.
Yeah. And is DCJ, the DC, DCJ media people, when they issue statements to correct inaccurate things that are said, are they doing that as part of the judiciary? Or are they doing that as part of the public service?
No, they're not, they're, they are not members of the judiciary.
Yeah, okay. And they're not sort of attached to the apparatus in a relevant sense?
So we as departmental officials work closely with an independent judiciary to support them. DCJ within the court space exists to support an independent judiciary and provide services to them so that they can fulfil all of their functions. And the media teams are there in a similar vein to provide that service, should it be required.
So, so for example, if in response to a particular decision, DCJ put out a statement saying, look, coverage has not been accurate of this matter, would such a statement have to be approved by the head of jurisdiction? Or could that just be done by a DCJ?
It would be remarkable to me if they, if the media team were putting out a statement in relation to matters like that without first consulting within the, within the court.
Within the court? Yeah, okay. And what's the relationship between DCJ media people and the DPP media people? Would they sort of talk on matters and be involved?
I'm not, I'm, I don't have direct knowledge of that. I suspect a lot of the media teams would be known to each other. It's a particular skill set and I suspect that people move freely between various employment as they probably do within parliamentarian offices and things like that as well. So I don't, I don't know that I've got an answer for that.
Yeah. So the other question that I wanted to ask is sort of based on a case that I was involved in a few years back, not that long ago in fact, where a media outlet named a 17-year-old who'd been sentenced in a sex matter and the solicitor went to the police and reported it and the police seemed to be of the view, oh, look, that's a matter for the courts, we don't really investigate those sorts of things, it's a court matter. Is there any, like, is that correct? Is there any official jurisdictional role for the court?
The New South Wales Police force are the, are the proper body to investigate an offence.
And in terms of.
The court has no investigative powers.
Yeah, and nor do they, nor are they required to sanction, for example, an investigation for a suggested breach of section 15A of children's criminal proceedings, correct? So it's entirely a matter for the police.
Correct.
Yeah, so police should be treating 15A like any other criminal offence and if some allegation is made to them of breach, then they should investigate it or not investigate it, depending to their discretion, like any other criminal offence?
The start of your question was the police should, I can't say what the police should do, but, but the general gist of your question I, I adopt.
Yeah, yeah. So are you aware from any previous matters of this suggestion that there's some sort of problem in getting the police to investigate these matters?
To the question earlier, I'm not aware of this, of matters of this nature previously.
Yeah, okay, we said that, yeah, okay.
I've just got a quick follow-up. The media people that work for each of the courts and tribunals, are you able to provide the committee with the numbers of people in each of those media units in each court and tribunal?
Yes.
Thanks.
I just was wondering whether, I know I asked you about whether there was any work going on, so ignore that. I realise I can't ask you that, but the ALS has provided a submission to this inquiry. They raise in a very succinct, very articulate and very real way about that notion of the tendency to identify, you know, material tending to identify children or young people. I think Ms. Carter referred to it as the jigsaw principle. And there was in fact a New South Wales Law Reform Commission in 2022, open justice report. You're nodding your head, you're aware of this.
Yes.
And they refer to material about information tending to identify. There is, are you aware of this suggestion that, you know, reforming the law to provide sort of a list of what are the circumstances or material or factors that can, information that can lead to that jigsaw identification? Is this something that you're aware of within DCJ? And obviously I'm talking about that relationship between the courts, as Ms. Carter was saying, the independence of the judiciary, being able to do their work and protect that, but also the, at, at the public interest in these matters, which is always high, but this fundamental principle of protecting the identity of young people. Are you aware of that work that the Law Reform Commission had published?
I'm aware of the Law Reform Commission and I'm aware of similar comments that made by the agencies that you've referred to previously.
I see. And that, is that, okay, and yeah, thank you. It's very limited, isn't it, about what you can say? Ms. Carter, thank you. You'd no doubt be aware that there's been extensive media coverage of judges making statements in relation to the DPP, DPP making statements in relation to judges. If you have public statements in the press that are seen to undermine a judge's credibility, is that a matter for the proper administration of justice?
As I said before, there's a, there's a threshold question or a materiality question that is, that is asked and assessed and the DCJ there to support the independent judiciary would, would be speaking with the judiciary in relation to any response that they thought would be necessary. As we're all aware, the judiciary traditionally take no steps, even in the face of strident criticism and reporting generally. But from time to time, as has been, examples will be provided, they do, they do provide comments back to make sure that the record where appropriate is corrected. But the, but the, the role of DCJ is not to be a head of the independent judiciary, but to support the independent judiciary in that regard.
Is it perhaps correct that traditionally the Attorney General would have seen it within his or her role to speak out on occasions like that, recognising the proper reluctance of the judiciary to do so? And that, that has practices perhaps fell into dissuade you, we might say, and therefore we are seeing, for example, the Chief Justice feeling a need to do that? And if that is historically the case, is there an argument that perhaps that should be revisited?
I think, I think you're correct in the sense that historically that has been the role of the Attorney General. I don't know that I would agree with your characterisation that that has stopped. But there are other organs within society, such as the Bar Association and the Law Society, also take a, a role in this space from time to time and, and make public comment about matters that they believe to be of noteworthy of public commentary.
And are you aware of any discussion that was conducted between judges on the district court and DCJ in relation to some of the press commentary that's been occurring?
No, I'm not aware.
Thank you.
I just had two quick follow-ups. The question I asked earlier, can you also provide the public sector classification of those media people, if they're classified into different types? And then just a point of.
For the, for the record, I'll take that on notice. I was nodding, but I'll take that on notice.
Thank you, thank you. And just, I wanted to clarify something else to make it abundantly clear. The ODPP media officers are not DCJ media officers, are they?
There's, there's a separation, that's exactly right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that. Any more questions? No more questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Dath.
Yeah, thank you.
I know you've taken a question or two on notice. The Secretary will be in contact with you soon.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.